Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Stratford Town Council. This is a meeting of July 10th, 2017, and it is 8:01 PM. We will start with a prayer and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Llewellyn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Heavenly Father, grant us your guidance as we are gathered here this evening and carry out our duties to make— carrying out our duties to our townspeople and helping to make our town a better place in which to live. We invoke thy blessing upon these beloved United States. We pray divine guidance for the President, his counselors, advisors, and for the governors and all elected officials in the town of Stratford. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes? The minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting in public forum of June 12th and special meetings of June 19th and June 22nd?
So, Madam Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just seconded by Mr. Young. Discussion? Okay, there being no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes, nine to zero. The next item on the agenda is ceremonial presentations and awards. There being none, we will move to the third item on the agenda, which is council members' response to comments from the public forum. Mr. Farrington Posner, we will start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. I know it's a beautiful night and, you know, the beach is still open and, uh, and the sun's been shining, so I appreciate you taking your time away from your everyday lives to be here with us tonight. Again, I've listened to speakers and I'm happy to—I'm happy to hear new speakers coming up here this month. Faces I've never seen before. People that are invested in this town, who own homes, and again, are saying, "Please don't raise my taxes. We can't afford it anymore." And I have to tell you, to the few new speakers I saw up here tonight and the, uh, and the ones I've seen each month, and I appreciate you coming out again and again, you're joined by many, many, many Stratford residents. They all feel the same way you do. Whether it be here that I'm listening to you talk to me, or I'm at a supermarket—which I can't go to Stop &amp; Shop these days without being there for at least two hours. And I'm serious about that. To, to being stopped at a gas station while I was sitting in my car and asked, "Are you Scott, the councilman?" And the guy reaching his arm into my car, just telling me, "I want to shake your hand. Thank you." To being at a social events and people coming up to me because they recognize me, whether from here, the paper, or Channel 79, and just thanking me. I thank all of you and all of these people that have been coming to me, telling me how they feel, because without your voices, without your passion, and without you taking a stand, like, this doesn't happen. We would not be where we're at today, where we have council people that are actually listening to the residents, that are not just listening to an administration and deciding it's time, "Look, we're going to rubber stamp for another year." You actually have people up here that truly represent you now. And, and that's what the big change was in 2015. And I hope this upcoming November, that we as a community band together and reelect the members that have been up here fighting for you and listening for you, listening to you, and also elect new people to the council that want you to continue having a voice and promise you that they will represent you. I don't really know what else to say here, except I agree with Councilwoman Mitzi Antezo. Something isn't right here in Stratford. There's been, uh, there's been funds that have been—enterprise funds that have been robbed, in my opinion, and used when they shouldn't have been. And we need to reverse that. And that's something that we've been trying to do in this budget. Two budgets that we passed that ultimately got vetoed would have corrected the misuse of those enterprise funds. So, when Marianne Antezo says, "We're going to sue," you know what? I've been there before against the town when they did some wrongdoings. I'll be there again. Sign me up. I'll definitely be a plaintiff on that one. Also, I don't know much about the Stratford Avenue name change. It's, it's not in my district. I've seen some paperwork on it. That's something that I think that we're going to have to all look at and discuss, because the last thing I had seen regarding that was that all the residents were on board for a name change. And now we're getting new petitions today, letting us know that there's, there's a group of residents that would not like to see the name changed. So, that's all paperwork that we're going to have to go through. We're going to have to have conversations. I, I would not like to see any—time—I'm not sure if that's on the agenda, not I don't remember. I would not like to see any vote taken on that tonight, so we could have more time to, to discuss. But thank you for coming out and expressing your concerns on that. To Ms. Rodea, I absolutely 100% agree with you about the 8-33 state statute. And, um, and I will fight with you for that. Okay? So, I'll, I'll be making the calls and, and we'll be in touch. And, uh, last but not least, tonight, there's no item on the agenda to, to discuss the budget. And, you know, after hearing the public speak and say, "Listen, we need to all come together and compromise, and we need to work on a budget, and we need to get something passed." And to know that it wasn't even put on the agenda for discussion is, is very, very concerning to me. I would hope tonight that this council pledges to keep discussion open on the budget moving forward, and at least allows it to be on the agenda, so this council can do their due diligence and do what they're—we're elected to do, and that's pass a budget. Again. So, I'm just—I implore this council to, to allow it on the agenda tonight and have the seven votes to do so. One person should not dictate the agenda for an entire council of 10. And I'm willing to continue working on that. You have my, uh, you have my word and my pledge. So, uh, thank you again, all for coming out. I appreciate it, and, um, let's get to work.
Mr. Cadine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, I would say thank you guys for coming out. Um, you know, you can be anywhere in the world right now, but you choose to come here because the budget is that important to you. Now, the taxes have steadily been coming up, going up all the years I've been here. I own my property almost, almost 20 years now, since I've been here. And every year, it went up. Now, you can say what you want to say. We need to do this, we need to do that. I think a lot of times when the budget go up, it's based upon ideas that are not always founded. We, we need this and we need that, but you don't check with the public. For example, last budget, we had a problem of $5 million because they thought the WPCA would be sold. No one said they wanted the WPCA to be sold, but yet, you factored that in to your budget. That's, that's bad management. Now, next year, the following year, this year, they gave so much money to the Board of Ed, now we having another problem. It's too much money. You spitting out there like it's your money. It's not your money. You want to put your money out there? Go ahead, spend it any way you want. But when it's the taxpayers' money, you have to be accountable for the taxpayers. So, continuously, it has to be fixed. Why do—so, what, what do you pay a mayor for to come up with a budget that you have to fix? So, why doesn't he get a salary? I mean, I love the mayor. I respect the mayor. But you have to have more input. Maybe the people around him are saying things they shouldn't say. I don't know. Maybe you should ask me. But the fact of the matter is, that has to change. And for so—since I've been on the council, and, and I have to, have to thank the mayor for this, because a lot of times, you fall asleep on your feet. He would always say something like, "What's your plan? What's your plan?" Okay, we put together two plans. So, you don't like those two plans, you vetoed those two plans. Okay. We don't like your plan either. That's why we didn't vote for it. So, apparently— Apparently, there's a difference in view and understanding, because myself is an—I'm a numbers guy. So, I see the numbers are there, so we don't have to raise taxes really anymore. The problem is that when you create a budget and you say, "We need to build this and build that and fix this and fix"—unfounded. Now, I understand we have some infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. Our sewer system, our water pipe. We, we know that has to be done. But some of these projects, I don't know where they came from. And then also, when you look at how they—in each, in each of the departments, a lot of this stuff can really cut back, really. I mean, I've seen all these, these, these cars that are being misused. I've seen people in places they shouldn't have been in, in those cars. If, if you want to do a personal run, park the car from the town, jump in your car and run over where you got to go, and then come back and get the car for your job. Don't take your job car and go pay your bills and hang out, go eat in other towns and party. No, that's not what the car's for. It's specifically for work. So, if you're doing something for yourself, go back to the, to the yard, park the car, jump in your car, and go do what you need to do for yourself. So, a lot of these things can be cut. These positions where the one year they start working, they're $60,000 a year, and the next year is 110,000. How you, how you justify that? How do you get away with that? It's like criminal. So, make me understand how, how you say, "We're going to raise taxes," for no justification far as I'm concerned. There's so many parts. When you look at the budget, you've got the CIP, you have the general, you have basic premise, you know, the taxes and such. When they break it all down, then you have the Board of Ed side. This is a joke to me, because the education is not really coming through. I mean, you're giving them all this money, where's the proof that they're teaching these children at such a higher level? Where are our outstanding students? Don't bring up five or 10 people. Where are they? Especially in the Latino, African-American community. Where are they? Please, show me. Then you can have what you want. But for now, you shouldn't have got all that money to begin with, so you're now, now you're trying to find reasons to have—to spend the money. So, you creating these programs that are failing, and you're just throwing away money at the tax expense, the, the, the taxpayers' expense. And that's not right. That's not right. You can't get so consumed by education that you can't see what's in front of you, which is common sense. Like I said, that budget for the Board of Ed is going to outweigh the talent. All the services that you are enjoying now, you're enjoying now, you're going to be crying about them. "Oh, we got—you couldn't get our garbage picked up? Oh, they don't fix streets no more?" Yeah, the Board of Ed got the money. Go get it from them. So, pay attention to that. You can't fall asleep on your feet. And then, it's okay to have a feeling, because we're human beings, you have feelings, but it's not founded. It's not factual. If we give you more money, the school's going to do better? No. You're just going to hire more people and pay them higher salaries. That's all you're going to do. So, and alongside with this budget, which it should never be raised, it shouldn't go any higher, I can't understand how, how do you bring a budget in at 218, then 219, and then you keep going up and up? So, where's the compromise? If we're at 216 and you're at 219, shouldn't you come down to 217 or 217 and a half? How do you keep going up? So, there's no compromise. There's no willing to work with us. You, "Oh, but, 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 you know, no one is working together." Yes, we—they did their part, we did our part. We passed two, they vetoed two. So, what are you talking about? We are working. Pay attention. The fact of the matter is, if you don't like it, it's okay to resign. Nobody's going to be mad if you resign. But you don't mistreat the people. These are people who've been here for families, generations to generations, and you're just kicking them out. There's so many people I know, left, live in Milford, live in Strat—live in, um, Shelton. They, they gone. They out. Good people, good families. But we want everyone to stay where they are in our town. This is a beautiful town. They turned the town into a city. This is not a city. This is a town. All of these condos, it's just ridiculous. Looking like little projects. It looks terrible. Cars all over the street, nowhere, nowhere to park. You didn't, you didn't map out how much space you were going to need for all of these different condos you're putting up. Nobody cares about what's going to happen to WPCA, all the flushing and all of the sewage that has to pass through. Nobody cares about that. So, if economic development is a, a thing that's going to bring economic stability, then why do taxes keep being raised? It's like a waste of an office. You paying somebody in economic development to bring in businesses so that we have to pay no more taxes, or as high taxes, and guess what? We're still paying high taxes. So, what are they there for? We're paying them and paying more taxes. Make no sense. So, I just want to say thank you guys for putting up with this long journey. Last year was, like, really happy. Went right through, bam. So, you figure out of seven years going—this is the eighth year—seven years you get the budget any way you want, you're happy. The one year you don't, and it's only for a year, by the way. People act like the budget is going to be here for 20 years. No, it's one year. One year. We can't pass the budget we put forth for one year, but you can have it the way you want for seven years. That's not fair. That's not government. That's not good government. So, pay attention to who you elect. Recognize that if, if they don't understand the thought process of economic stability or doing with less, don't vote them in the position. Please don't, because they, they can never hear anything you say in terms of your budget at your home, that you can't afford to do these things anymore because the taxes are so high. So, thank you and God bless, and have a good night.
Okay. Mr. Hard—Mr. Harden will be here in a bit. He had to stay late at work, and so he is on his way. But in the meantime, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Wally. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Tina. Mitzi, thank you. It's hard to be an adversary to a system that's so well-trenched that when charter and law are violated, they say, "Leave it alone, Greg. It's just the way things are done. Why you going to rock the boat?" There's an ethical underpinning to what most of us should do, regardless of what politics we favor. And that's a main motivation for my efforts to ask, for example, the BOE for transparent budgeting. It's nearly impossible to get a balanced financial report from the COO or his staff over at the Board of Ed. And they shrug their shoulders like, "We don't have to tell you." It's really disingenuous. Here, we engage in behaviors that—I use the words commingling and other adjectives to describe—that would not be accepted in a commercial enterprise. Companies would be sued, they'd go bankrupt, and the individuals—just think of the case of Enron. People always—don't always get caught, but when they do get caught, the ramifications are big. We're caught. It's time for us to be accountable for the activities that we engaged in, to reverse that behavior and start on a new path, a good path that can—anyway. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mitzi. Tonight, another budget will be introduced. I hope that the members of the council will find seven votes to allow it to be added to the agenda for discussion. And thank you all for coming out tonight.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to everybody for coming out again tonight. It's much appreciated. Good to see everybody. A couple of quick things. We are still working on, on the budget. It's never stopped. We're continuing, and we will continue until it gets done and we find a compromise. In terms of the other thing that most people came to talk about was changing the streets. Honestly, not quite sure. I think that's something we shouldn't bring up, because I thought that it was—everybody on the street had wanted this. So, obviously, now we have some different opinions, and we'll have to look at it again and revisit it, so. But I just want to say thank you to everybody. Appreciate it. And, Mitzi?
Okay, Ms. Antezo?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since I was one of the speakers, I'm going to comment on my own statement. But I, I'm going to repeat it for people that weren't here before. And I think it's very important to note that the Town Charter 6.2.6 specifically states that the council, council shall set the mill rate, not the mayor. And since we are using last year's budget, the mill rate set by the council last year was 38.99, I don't think the mayor has a right under law to change this. And unless the mill rate stated in the post article is changed from 39.97 back to 38.99, I said we will sue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and expressing their thoughts and opinions. Basically, two comments. Ms. Rodea, I wholeheartedly agree with your comments concerning the change in statute to low income—excuse me, affordable income, affordable housing statute. I'm pretty sure that our entire delegation in Hartford has already signed on as sponsors of that bill, and I would assume that they would work diligently to override the governor's veto. Concerning change of name on Stratford Avenue, I believe that the chairman may have some thoughts on that, since I don't believe we're talking about the entire length of Stratford Avenue from Elm Street to Bonystock. So, I'll wait to hear those thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, as always, I thank everyone for coming out. It's summer season now, so I'm sure, you know, you guys have better things to do, better places to go, but thank you for being here. We do appreciate your presence. With regards to the, um, the name change that three speakers brought up, I think we're all going to kind of agree that that's going to be an item that's going to need some further review before we, you know, finally act on it. It involves six addresses. It seems like there's a petition involving eight addresses, and then the other eight addresses are split as to what the exact name change should be. We recently did a name change, so we kind of know the steps in the process. So, once we hear back from the affected homes, that should be able to move forward relatively efficiently. With regards to the 8-30G item, I too am in support of having our state legislators work together with their colleagues up in Hartford and override Governor Malloy's veto. As his zoning commissioner, I was part of actually approving and putting through an 8-30G application. It is a very one-sided, very heavy-handed process. It favors the applicant excessively and is a very burdensome regulation for Stratford, as well as all the other municipalities to deal with. For the budget discussion, from our meeting that got adjourned last Wednesday, there was a document that could have been presented. I understand that last Thursday, some people met. There's another document to be presented. Hopefully, we can get those issued amongst ourselves, start reviewing them, have the town attorneys vet them out, have kind of the town department heads vent them out, confirm that they are able to be acted upon, and then act upon them at that time. Sonia Devitt mentioned that, you know, she felt it would be unconscionable to vote on, on a budget amendment, but there having been no vetting and no review. I agree with that, and for those reasons, I would not be in favor of opening up the agenda tonight, but I do think that we should exchange the documentation and look at what we've all been working on. In terms of the charter, our charter states that there's a May 12th deadline for passing a budget. We, we didn't follow it. Seems like there are committees and commissions that are allowed to do what they want. People seemingly can pick and choose which parts of the charter they want to follow. I'm becoming to get the opinion that our charter is a virtually useless, toothless paper tiger, and so I really don't know how much value its statements weigh. With regards to the tax bills, apparently from the Connecticut general statutes, there's a section called CT Common Law, Connecticut Common Law. That apparently is what the mayor used. It's in order to keep the town functioning and keep the town operating. Last Monday, we failed to pass an appropriations measure. The town can't function and can't operate with no money. In terms of there being a compromise, I think a compromise would be a great idea. At one point, there were people that were in agreement that there should be a 0.0 increase for the Board of Education. The Board of Education's Finance Committee put forth a 4.3% increase. I think somewhere between that 0 and that 4.3 is the 2.35 to 2.75 number that a lot of us have been talking about. That would be a compromise. People talking about the function and the appearance of the town council. I actually think that people who refer to us as dysfunctional are really paying us a compliment. We're a legislative body that doesn't make any laws. The budget is ordinance 17-02, the mill rate is 17-03. We're not dysfunctional. We're non-functional. It's a—it's a very much a severe problem. I view myself as part of that problem and am part of taking ownership for being part of that problem. I've decided to not run for reelection. I feel very fortunate that in the 9th District, there's somebody with the class integrity, knowledge, and experience of Bill O'Brien. I will be wholeheartedly supporting him as he attempts to take my place in this seat. In conclusion, I think when we're done responding to public forum comments, in light of what happened last Monday, in light of what happened on Wednesday, I think we should take a few seconds to look around, look each other in the eye. The mayor's not here, and I think one of the things we need to realize is that we need to get ourselves on the same page. We need to solve some of our own problems before we're then able to solve this problem. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Llewellyn. And thank you for your service. Ms. Manis?
Hello. Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. I really appreciate your attendance on this beautiful day, and also all of your words and all of the great people who came out, who I've never seen before. I think that that really says something for inclusivity and people feeling confident enough to get up at a microphone and talk, not knowing a person in the room and not knowing if, you know, their comments are going to fall on deaf ears or not. One of the things that I want to mention, I agree with Sonia McDevitt. Sonia Devick, I don't know if you know, she's a lawyer. She can—she's making a legal, a legal opinion up here. And another thing is, is Mitzi Antezo read from Andrew Lord, and I want to be clear that that is the WPCA's hired lawyer. He represents the WPCA. We hired him a few months ago. So, that was a opinion that came from the lawyer for the WPCA Board, which is separate from the council, but we all serve on it. As far as the 8-30 dash—the 8-30G, I also support Ms. Rodea's comments. Those of you that don't know, when we were in the budget—the throes of budget piece, one of the days when I was late and wasn't able to come, I was at—holding a forum with legislators in my district to talk about 8-30G, because many were concerned regarding the Holly Lane project and its rejection and possibly coming back as that. I lobbied very hard at the state. I lobbied with the Black and Hispanic Caucus, people that were against this completely and saw it as a racial issue, and they voted with us. They, they broke their caucus almost in two to vote for this, and I'm very impressed with the leadership of Representative Butler, who is a lifetime member of the NAACP, and the, the personal turmoil that he went through, and also Representative Kim Rose, who led this charge. Representative Hoideck signed on to this bill after I sent my emails and reached out. She signed on to this bill. Representative Joe Gresko was on there as a cosponsor. You can see Ben McGordy as well. However, Kevin Kelly continues to be elusive with regards to this bill. I have not seen him sign on as a cosponsor. I'd like to know where he stands. He is on the Housing Committee. He is a member of that committee, and I'd like to know where he stands. So, I'm putting that out there publicly. And I know Senator Gomes signed on as well and voted for this. I don't think he signed on as a cosponsor. I know he, he did vote for it. So, this is a good piece of legislation. This is not a bad thing. This allows us to have home control a little bit and gives us some say. And I think that that's all people want, is just to have a voice in their community. So, I will be fighting for that. I will be fighting hard. And I think if anybody knows, it would be Ms. Rodey after the debacle that happened with Avalon. It was a really—it was a really terrible thing in that neighborhood. People really felt like their voices weren't heard, and I don't want to see that happen anywhere else. So, I think that we've been doing a good job with regards to that, and I think that we can lobby at the state level for this, and I hope and implore you all to reach out multiple times a day to legislators. This is the first veto that Dan Malloy put forward all year. He vetoed this. And I went up to the progressives' dinner, and I found every single person who voted against it, and I told them off. And they looked at me. "I didn't vote for that." I go, "I know you didn't." And now, "I'll never support you again." And they looked at me. It's like, "I'm a Democrat. You voted against my neighbors. I don't care who they are, and I don't care what you think you're doing. I don't care who they are, and I don't care what you think you're doing, you voted against my neighbors, and that is not okay. Please, doesn't matter who they are, email them and make sure they're on board, get informed. It's very, very important." The last thing I want to talk about is, Tom Young mentioned that he expects everyone to run for reelection, and I know Mr. Llewellyn spoke about that. Mr. Dumas put forward a thing with the rules when we were deciding on the rules. He wanted to have two counselors be able to bring something forward and have it be put on the agenda, and I voted for that amendment to the rules, and that amendment failed. And if that amendment had not failed, you would have an agenda that would be open and ready to be, open to whatever people brought forward. And even if it wasn't two people, if we had amended it to three or four, still, seven is a lot to be able to change and amend an agenda. It's a lot, and it really is oppressive. And that's one of the things that has always bothered me about government and the parliamentary procedures, the oppression of it all. It's very formal, it's very stuffy, it's not my natural skin. If anybody's met me, you know those are not things that come naturally to me. Speaking in turn, making sure I raise my hand, all the things in my classroom, I scoff at and teach my students not to do to be part of a learning community, we do here. And it's taught me a lot, but it's also made me very self-reflective. The titles, you know, the pomp and circumstance of it all. All of that stuff comes at a price for the grassrootsiness of the stuff I loved, and that's the reason I got involved, sticking up for my neighborhood. So I wasn't planning to run for reelection, and I waited a long time because when I ran for election in May, I hadn't been thinking of it until WPCA came along. I had actually regressed from the DTC. I hadn't been at a meeting in months. I walked into a meeting, and they needed somebody to collect petition signatures, and I stepped up. And when that petition was rejected on Cinco de Mayo, I walked into the town clerk's office and filed my paperwork because there was a need. District 10 needed a fighter. I wanted and prayed and hoped that District 10 just didn't need a fighter anymore, that we could turn the page. We had a budget passed by a majority, we held taxes in place, a new leader was coming, there would be a new day, if we could just hold it together for the new leader and somebody else could come in and soar. We fixed the WPCA and the budget, we held the sewers flat. It didn't happen that way. Twice, things were vetoed. Now, budgets aren't on agendas. And for a person who was going to be in Mr. Llewellyn's spot, telling you all at this meeting that I wasn't going to be running, District 10 still needs a fighter, so I guess I'm announcing my reelection. I'm announcing my campaign. I don't even have paperwork to deliver, and I will be out for two whole days. I am announcing my reelection now because we can't get it together and have calm. When the day comes that my style is out of style, I will retreat back gracefully. But right now, I even thought of throwing myself on the floor and saying, "If you do it, I won't come back. Pass this seventh vote, you can have me. I won't come back. Don't veto it, please, I won't come back." Which is not going to work. So I can't allow my people to not have a voice. They have to have a voice, and I hope that anybody that's thinking of running for election, you really think long and hard if you want to be a voice for the people, because just sitting there and looking cute ain't going to work anymore. Thank you.
The next, next speaker, if he chooses, is David, is Mr. Harden.
Alan, thank everyone for coming out. Alan, you really hit the nail on the head when you talked about, you know, the council coming together and working together as a group of individuals and doing what's right. As we know, the, the budget is a hard piece of literature material and numbers to really work out, and we've tried it, and I'm hoping that maybe we can continue to do it. You know, I appreciate everyone's comments. I have to apologize, I was a little late due to work, and, and the fight continues to go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
A point of information.
I'm going, we're just in, and we're just in responses to comments from public forum, and I'm going to take my opportunity to respond to the public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. There's been a lot of criticism about this agenda. The budget is not on the agenda. I just want to remind everybody that on last Monday, 8:30 in the morning, the first opportunity in the new fiscal year, the council met to hopefully pass an appropriations measure so the town could continue operating in the fiscal year. My preference would have been that we met on July 1st, because that was actually the beginning of the fiscal year, not three days into it with no budget and no appropriations. But we didn't meet then, and instead, we met the very first thing in the morning, the beginning of the fiscal year, and we failed to pass appropriations, was a four-to-four vote. So, on, there was discussion during that meeting, during a recess in a caucus, saying, "Please give us until Wednesday, I promise we'll pass, we'll compromise, we'll pass a budget." So, we did that. We had a special meeting on Wednesday, and what was on that agenda was a budget, was the mayor's proposed budget again, which was really the budget that four of us had been advocating, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Chase, Mr. Harden, and myself. And that budget got voted down, and then there were attempts to, then, there was, I mean, I have to look at minutes to keep, sometimes I get a little fuzzy up here, but there was a motion to reconsider, and then that didn't happen, and then again, it got voted down, and then Mr. Leclerc, the attorney, Mr. Leclerc, said there was one last way. Remember, we took a recess, and I know a number of you in the audience were there. We took a recess, and there was one last way to actually open it up again, and that got voted down. We would have had to waive the council rules to have another reconsideration. Anyways, the budget got voted down. The agenda for this meeting, according to our rules, had to be put out Wednesday morning, right? By Wednesday morning, Ms. Cabral and I had been going back and forth, and the agenda was ponied out to people. I think that was Wednesday. And, so when the budget was voted down, the very, so on that agenda, I wasn't sure on Wednesday whether that budget that we were going to be considering in the night would actually be considered. It could have been tabled, it had been tabled in the past in another meeting, so to be on the safe side, I put it on. We voted on that budget, we voted it down. This body cannot vote on the same budget twice, so that's why an amended agenda was put out. There were no other budgets submitted to me, there were no requests to put anything onto the agenda submitted to me in time for a new budget to be put on, in time for a new budget to be put onto this agenda. That being said, certainly, the administration needs time, I need time to review any new budget that I haven't seen. So I will not be voting to amend the agenda to put a new budget on, certainly one that I haven't seen at all. There were other, I had things said in the public forum. One had to do with the renaming of Stratford, that part of Stratford Avenue. If you're familiar with that neighborhood going to Bonds Dock, there are actually two different streets. One goes from Stratford Avenue, Elm Street, that complex intersection where you would have to bear right if you were coming down. That's, that part is the part that's in question. The other part, where you would be taking a right to go on to Bonds Dock, that part wasn't in question. All of the residents there were in favor of the renaming. We had renamed that to Bonds Dock Way. Some residents got back to me and said we, that they prefer Selby Pond Road as the name. So that part's set. Now, what to do with the other part, we may, we should probably, I would recommend tabling that so we can have more discussion about that. There was mentioned, you know, pay attention to who you elect, and I totally agree with that. Do pay attention to who you elect. I personally would not elect anybody who wants to play games with budgets that were played in the past. And in the past, the town of Stratford had done things like underfund pensions, and that's what has gotten us into this mess today, whereas now, and I've said this in the past couple of meetings, but now 10% of our budget is pension obligation bonds. 10%, that's not going to change. But that was the big paradigm shift that happened last year. Going forward, if we keep on the road that we're on with cost of living increases, in my opinion, we're good. The future of this town is, I would say, very bright, but because those pension obligation bond payments are going to be coming down very shortly, but this is a very painful time. I would not do things in any budget that underfunds workers' comp. Funding workers' compensation is a necessary thing, and you should trust the advice of actuaries on that. I would not do anything that underfunds the Board of Education. This council signed, this council approved a teacher's contract, and we should provide them the resources for that, and for the other educational demands that are increasing. We are a very heterogeneous population in this town. Education is expensive. I would not approve any budget that underfunds health insurance, employee health insurance, when you know exactly how much the bill is going to be. It is irresponsible to then take $75,000, $100,000 off of that line, I forget what the latest proposal is, and I certainly wouldn't underfund utilities, also when you have a very good idea of what those bills will be. So, those sorts of games are what got us into this position in the past. Last year, in my opinion, was the first honest budget, and it's because of the efforts of five council persons up here, and again, those are Mr. Harden, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Chase, Mr. Young, and myself, with the mayor's approval, and he broke the tie, that we had the budget last year and that our bond rating did not go down. To me, it was miraculous that our bond rating did not go down last year. So, in my opinion, we're better off being honest and not play games in a budget. On that note, communications bills.
Madam Chair. Remonstrances. Madam Chair, I have a point of clarification and information for the town attorney, please.
Point of information.
I'm sorry.
Point of information.
The mayor, the mayor is not present currently. There is no report from him.
Madam Chair, a point of information.
And now we're into committee reports.
Point of information, please.
Actually, Ms. Antezzo. Ms. Antezzo, you had a point.
My point of information previously, I didn't realize you still were going to talk. Usually, Mr. Timniak sits in the mayor's seat.
He has never sat in the mayor's seat when the mayor has not been present?
I thought he did.
He has.
No, he has never, nope. He did once? When did he sit in the mayor's?
Whole meeting or just for?
To answer questions.
I have never.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want Mr. Timniak there?
I don't know if it's a requirement that he's.
No, it's not.
He did sit.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, I remember one time telling him not to, but, okay. Is there, do you want Mr. Timniak there?
Well, people could ask questions as if he could answer for the mayor or something. That's what my thought.
Okay, I'll take that.
Empty chairs, don't talk.
Ms. Maness?
My question specifically is a point of clarification or information for the town attorneys. I would like to know what happens to someone who erroneously, who errors in completing an agenda or erroneously omits an item. Is there any kind of recourse for that? If an item is omitted in error, because I know the agendas are very specific. That's my first question. I'm, I'm asking if there's any kind of recourse if an item is omitted in error.
Well, what are the facts that you're talking about?
Okay, the fact is, is that we have a budget in front of us in these big books that was never, that was never voted on.
Yes, we voted on that budget.
This budget was never voted on in its 39.93 entirety. What was not, what was voted on on 7/5, Beth, was an amendment, Madam Chair. It was an amendment that was not passed. Therefore, on our agenda should still appear the ordinance regarding the budget, which is the mayor's original budget at 39.93, if I'm not mistaken, because all we've done in course of all the meetings we've had is pass or reject amendments, not the budget itself. There was an attempt by Mr. Chase, day one, to bring forward this agenda, I mean, to bring forward this budget in its entirety to just try to pass it, and then it went awry and it did, it was tabled, or something happened, I'd have to look at the minutes. But this budget at 39.93 was never voted on, only amendments, as I recall. So that would mean, the budget, that would mean that the agenda that we have is currently in error, and things were omitted from it in error, and I believe that is not correct, that it's erroneous. So what happens when the budget, I mean, when the agenda doesn't reflect what it's supposed to legally?
Well, I, my recollection is that you did vote on the mayor's budget, and it was voted down. And, and I think, there's been so many meetings and so many votes, I'm not sure when it happened, but I, I think it might have been the first meeting when all the amendments were being made. I don't recall that. I think you voted on it. But irrespective of that, your council rules, I mean, you guys all passed the council rules, and it says that the chairman prepares the agenda. So, what recourse is there? Really none.
The tabled item doesn't appear, a tabled item doesn't have to appear on an agenda?
We can take a look at it, but I think, my recollection is different from yours. I think you voted on the mayor's budget and, and it was voted down.
It was blocked forward by Mr. Chase, and it was, he took it back, he took back his motion, and we tabled.
Madam Chair, point of clarification here. I think at this point, what we should be doing is, I mean, we're only talking over a two-month period, is we should be taking a recess, looking back at the minutes, because this is highly important, that the budget be on tonight's agenda. And if there is a way this budget can be on tonight's agenda without having to try and get seven votes, because I got to tell you, I don't remember that original budget of the mayor's ever being voted on, the 39.93.
Never.
So, if that budget should be on the agenda and was omitted and will say in error, that needs to be put back on this agenda, and we need to discuss it and maybe even vote on it tonight. So I think what we should be doing right now is taking a recess, looking back at the minutes, it shouldn't take too long, maybe 10 minutes, and get to the bottom of it. We're all here right now, let's do it.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is committee reports.
Only the chair can call a recess.
Committee, in the ordinance committee, during the regularly scheduled ordinance committee meeting of June 27, 2017, the following was favorably referred to the town council. Mr. Young, would you like to handle that?
Resolved that the second reading of the above entitled ordinance be dispensed with copies thereof received by all council members, and the foregoing be and is hereby approved effective 30 days from passage, appended as pages 19 through 23.
That's the groundwater and vapor intrusion?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm sorry, just a note that I believe that was approved in ordinance as amended. There was a little amendment, yeah.
Second, Madam Chairman.
Okay, discussion on the ordinance?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Is the town attorney available? Quick question. Some of us are concerned about the size of the penalty to these homeowners. If we were either to lower or eliminate the $250 penalty, could the ordinance still go into effect?
You certainly could remove the penalty or lower it. Right now, it reads that, as amended, it reads that it's up to the health department administrator to make a determination up to that amount. So that would be, that is, that is specifically that only used, so that person from the town would make a determination only if applied. So they could, that person could decide to give no penalty at all and just use it as an incentive. So you certainly could, but the reason putting it there was if it was so egregious that the administrator for the health department needed to get a response, this gave them the ability to really make somebody focus.
Thank you for the information.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Mr. Pan?
Brief. Attorney Jackson, could you remind us of that amendment? You just restated it, but which section it's written in?
Yes, it is actually in the penalty section, which is, and yours is the, is section nine. B.
Page twenty-three.
Page twenty-three of your agenda. And this basically says that we're creating a limitation on the access to groundwater in this particular area. So the idea would be to say.
Did you get twenty-three pages? We, no, we didn't get the last two pages, but.
What?
Hmm?
You don't have the last two pages of the agenda?
It wasn't included.
Twenty-two, no twenty-four there. Yeah, just for reference. We talked about it before.
So if you look at number nine B, what it does is, we amended the.
Not on mine.
So, so we amended, so the ordinance was amended to allow the enforcement by the Health Department, should that become necessary.
At the discretion of the Health Director.
Correct.
Perfect.
You have another one?
One more, please. It's the last page, Scott.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Antezzo?
Thank you. I just wanna make one comment about the people who were present at the ordinance committee. We did an extensive review of that ordinance on groundwater and vapor intrusion. A lot of questions were asked and answered satisfactorily. And then the amendment was put in to give the Health Director some leeway. So it's up to two-fifty, but it could be much less. Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, discussion, like to vote on this? All in favor? Actually, we need to roll call vote because it's an ordinance? Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim?
Pass. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Harden? Mr. Can?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Antezzo?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Ms. Manis? Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so that passes unanimously. Okay, next section is the Tax Partners, Tax Partnership Screening Committee. Ms. Manis, would you like to talk about this?
Sure. The Screening Committee conducted a special meeting on June twenty-seventh and referred the following counsel with favorable recommendation: Application of the Two Roads Brewing Company at one-five-two-six Stratford Avenue, a tax abatement for a hundred percent for three years, full abatement on the entire property. This aligns completely with the current code that we have regarding tax abatement. At that meeting, the, the tax assessor arrived with a stack of papers that she had been working on regarding tax codes and expressed an interest in beginning the process of working with people in the community, business leaders, and the Partnership Screening Committee to begin the process of amending the code. That said, Two Roads had two parts to their application. So if you go to look in FOIA, the first part was for the building itself, the property, improvements on the property. That was the only piece that was approved at that meeting. The other piece was tabled, which was for items, machinery, manufacturing, equipment. There is a state statute on the books that states that when, that they'll get a hundred percent abatement on all of that with regards to manufacturing. They were looking for some cover from the town in the interim. We are looking at the tax abatement, but what we were allowed to give under our code is all that we gave. So we understand that that is the difference, and they're able to begin improvements on their property. Be it resolved that the recommendation of the Tax Partnership Screening Committee is accepted and the tax abatement request for a hundred percent for three full years abatement on the entire property be and is hereby approved. And this, again, is just the property itself, not personal property, manufacturing assets that are in the property. That will be another resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadim? Okay, discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Through the chair, just a question for Ms. Manis. This, this property, the Two Roads, are we talking a tax abatement? When you say entire property, are we talking about the, where the existing building is now and that property? Are we also talking about the expansion?
It's an, it's an actual abatement on the expansion of the property.
How about the existing?
No. So it, it's on the improvement. So you give an abatement so that they can continue the construction and they can, they can get things going. Basically, they have a three-year kind of leeway. They pay a lot upfront for construction costs, they put a lot into it. It gives them three years to bring everything up onto the tax rolls. And it is only a three-year abatement. After three years, they will go on to full.
One-hundred percent full?
One-hundred percent full.
Now, the.
Okay, I'd like Ms. Antezzo to.
I just wanna make a comment on it.
No, I'm sorry.
It's a whole new building.
I didn't, I didn't.
It's not improving the regular building. They're gonna process a different type of beer, I believe, there.
But it's considered an improvement on an existing property. That's how you qualify for the abatement. Yes. Technically, it is. It's a whole new building. It's, it's a whole new thing, but it's an improvement on a property. So therefore, you must, you can apply for the abatement. We have multiple people that come forward and do this.
Now, is that, is that current structure, the current building, the current property, are they currently within a tax abatement period? They opened when? How?
I have not, I have been on the committee since 2015, as far as I have seen.
They've been open a little longer than that.
There is no, there was no abatement that was put forward to this, to our committee as I've been sitting on it. There were abatements from 2013, but I don't know if Two Roads received one prior to sitting on the committee.
That's what I'm asking, if they've already received an abatement for the.
That would be a question for the town, for the tax assessor. She would know.
Is, is the tax assessor here? No, she was here the other day. Mr. Timniak, would you be able to answer that?
I don't have an answer. The tax assessor was in court today. The tax assessor was talking about the meeting.
Mr. Posner?
Hold on. You really should give that, use the mic. I'm sorry, Chris.
Yeah.
The mayor's seat's open.
I spoke to the tax assessor earlier on in the day. She was at court almost the entire day, and she let me know that she was not gonna be able to make the meeting. I asked her how this passed the committee. She said that it was unanimous and that there shouldn't be any problems with it. If there's any specific questions, I'm happy to follow up with her and email them out through Carol Cabral.
I can tell you unofficially that there have been discussions within the first time that we met, and Two Roads was specifically mentioned with regards to the manufacturing of beer. When we were like, manufacturing what? And they were like, even manufacturing of beer. Two Roads was able to get something in the past when they, when they were here, when they brought their business here. So anybody who manufactures something, that manufacturing equipment under state statutes is completely a tax abatement. Our, our code is a little bit behind the times, unfortunately. Our code needs to be revised. We've been asking for it to be revised, so.
I, I get it, I get it. We're, you know, Two Roads is a good business, and it would definitely be, the expansion will be a welcomed addition to the town. The problem I'm having here is that we're in a budget crisis, and our taxes are so high, and it seems like we're giving out tax abatements like candy in this town. And, and that, to me, is a problem, especially with the FedEx building as well. We're getting businesses to come here, but we're not getting anything forward for quite some time. And while the residents here are still suffering and trying to figure out, do I get groceries or medicine today?
So what I can say through the chair is that the first meeting, we've only had two meetings, the first meeting we had, there was applications that were on, on the deck for us, where conversations had been had and promises had been made by the prior Economic Development Director. We looked at the law, there was discrepancies, Mr. Leclerc agreed with me. However, businesses that had been around a long time and that had been waiting for the committee to meet for years, some of the construction was already done, were there. One of those businesses, DeVita, has since, there didn't even open. So that tax abatement was null and void. So the other two that went through were based upon precedent and what was, had been doing. We promised going forward that we were gonna set this right. This abatement that came before us follows the law. It is not illegal, and it is, they are entitled by our code to this abatement. This was an easy abatement to do because it fell within this, it fell within the range of three years full abatement, end of story. There are other abatements that fall within, you know, first six years and then upward of fifteen, and then, and then it gets all sketchy. It gets very, very different. So this one was very straightforward, it's clearly in the code. If I was a business owner and I looked at Stratford and I read our code and our tax abatement, and I decided to open there, and I put my business and my improvement in that frame, this is what I would expect. So just like we expect certain things in our laws and charter, I think that we have a calling card that they expect as well. So we have to, we have to adjust it, and I think we need to make it a little bit more flexible, even more so than what it already is, because it's not flexible at all.
Okay, I think you've answered all my questions. Thank you, Ms. Manis.
Ms. Antezzo would like to contribute to that answer.
I just wanted to expand on that. The, it's actually, the abatement, depending on the value of the property, was it eight million dollars? It was quite, quite extensive, yeah. Is part of the town code. I understand what you're saying, people are suffering, but the thing is, the code is there, and we have to follow it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So when it comes on, when it comes online, we would be expecting?
It's online.
No, 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 I'm sorry. When it comes, when that, when the tax abatement runs out, we would expecting, we would be expecting how much? How much is this tax abatement worth?
Look at the minutes. Through the chair, the tax assessor mentions it, and I think, I think it was, like, even fourteen percent of that was like eighty-five thousand dollars. It was, it was a lot of money. She knows all the numbers, it's all mentioned in the minutes of the meeting.
I wanna be, I don't think there was a hard number given, because you can't assess the property until it's built.
Right. She goes back in, just like she did with one of the new businesses down in Lordship. She just went back in, and she found out, ah, what I thought was there, wasn't there. Those things are not able to be abated, so that it changes. So like, the tax assessor goes back and forth. And as far as FedEx, FedEx was way before our time. I have no idea what went on there. I have no idea what went on with Walmart. All I can say is that moving forward, we really, we really stuck to it. And they would have two resolutions here if we were not, as a group, concerned about the second personal property manufacturing part of the code that needs to be revised. And the business owner was fine.
Thank you. Mr. Chase?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of questions. One's clarification. If I understood you correctly, are you saying that the town code ordinance requires, if we're gonna approve it, it requires one-hundred percent? Or do you have any flexibility to have, let's say, a lower, ninety, or eighty, or sixty, or what have you? Are you saying that if you come in for a tax abatement in that, for that particular area or section, that it has to be a hundred percent, and it's either voting yes up or down?
There are, through the chair, there are certain pieces of the code that say up to, and there are other pieces of the code that say a hundred percent.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about this tax abatement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking. That's why, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. We made a little worksheet to kind of follow.
Would the chairman of the tax abatement committee know?
Yes, Ms. Antezzo?
I believe he qualified, I can't remember, was it eight million dollars?
It's full, it's full abatement, it's full abatement, a hundred percent on value added. That's what the, the ordinance says directly, and this was approved by the town attorney. Costs which exceeds five million, a hundred percent tax abatement for three years.
Five million and up?
Five million and up.
Yeah.
So, and then the other ones say over ten million, three years plus, it says full abatement, a hundred percent. Other ones below that, three million to four ninety, four-point-nine, five-hundred-thousand to two, all say up to three years, up to two years, up to seven years. So they give you more flexibility. Once you hit that five-million-dollar mark.
It's a hundred percent for years.
It's a hundred percent, and then if you're over ten million, it says three years plus six. So it's a full abatement, a hundred percent on value added only, so not the whole property, just the value added, plus six years per D-five, which becomes nothing lower than thirty percent and upwards of fourteen percent each year thereafter. The problem with the ten-million-dollar one is that.
We're talking about just this one, though.
Right.
The question was about this.
So, so the other ones, that, the reason that the tax, the reason that the stuff with the other stuff needs to change is because you can't put seven years in after thirty percent starting. So it's, this one is very cut and dry. This, this one is a hundred percent value added, three years, period.
Okay, Madam Chairman, follow up on that.
I, I'm sorry, I just would like to interrupt. Mr. Leclerc, is that correct, that we have no flexibility on this at all? That has to be three years full amount for eight million dollars?
No, I have the one that you.
I can grab the ordinance book.
Okay.
While he's grabbing the ordinance book, do you, what criteria do you use, either to the chairman, maybe this should be directed to the chairman, what criteria do you use to approve or disapprove these requests?
Here you go.
The basic criteria is that the assessor, well, they submit pages of documentation. Some of it quite detailed as to what they're doing and what they're constructing, and also what manufacturing equipment they may have on hand. That's where, we have a difficulty with the manufacturing equipment, and we're, we're going to meet and work on that and change it. But, and then the assessor takes their application and examines the building. I'm thinking, for instance, of a new request, initially was over a million dollars, that they stated they had improvements in its wag pants, the indoor dog park, and do a whole bunch of dog stuff there. But anyway, when she went in there, she discovered that a lot of it was not part of the construction, and she's talking just about the building. So it is vetted by the assessor.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I will, well, let me just say this. I, I think, Mr. Posner, I think you're correct in a sense. The brewery is a real asset to the town. I am very happy they're successful, and I'm happy that they're going to expand. I'll support this, but it is, it is troubling that this is coming up at a time where the town is in fiscal straits.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kadim?
As a member of the committee, when, when you look at the breakdown, it's not taken lightly, you know, even though it's very, this particular one was the easier one because of the amount, and it went specifically with the code. But a few of them that we turned away didn't, didn't go with the code since we've been there. And it has to be worked on. The lawyer says he's gonna work on it, he's gonna work with the finance director to see if we can find out where do we fall to fix the wording, because the wording is off. Like you said, the numbers don't count if you go thirty percent and do five or seven years up, or even ten years up. The numbers don't add. So that, that's gonna be hopefully corrected soon. I thought it would be corrected by now. To have a meeting and have that shaken like that, because we had, when our first meeting, we had, people had put paperwork in from 2013, if I remember correctly. And not, not all of them was able to get what they needed because it didn't fall into the line. So we're not just giving away tax breaks. We're going according to the code and according to the law. So, but like I said, this one particular area, it has to be corrected, and Ms. Antezzo, as well as Ms. Manis, knows it. So the lawyers as well. So we're working on that. But it's based upon what we have for our town in terms of a tax abatement. So it's not something where we take lightly ourselves. It's very serious to us.
Madam Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Antezzo?
Yes. As a chairman, I've been trying to get a date when all of the committee members, voting committee members can meet, and it's been difficult this month. I sent out another email just a couple of days ago asking for dates again where we could all be there. The other thing is that we have requested from the assessor to give us, if she can possibly get it, information about the surrounding towns and what kind of tax abatements they do. And we're waiting for that report from her.
Madam Chairman, I move the question.
Okay, all in favor of moving the question? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're going to vote on the question now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes ten to zero on the tax abatement. All opposed? That passes 10 to zero on the tax abatement. Next, I'm sorry, Brian, we already voted. Next is the town attorney's report. Mr. Hodgson?
I have no report this evening.
You have no report? Okay. Questions to the town attorney. I, I have a question for the town attorney, and that is, if a mayor provides us with a second proposed budget, would, is it reasonable to assume that that supersedes the first proposed budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to the town attorney?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Can.
Mr. Can, a follow up, does, has the mayor, to your knowledge, created a second proposed budget?
The second, the budget that we voted on on Wednesday was the second proposed budget from the mayor.
That was, that was an, that was an amendment to the original budget.
No, 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 it was a...
Point of clarification.
It was presented as a proposed, as a mayor's proposed budget.
Point of information. So we were presented with a budget that was not itemized to vote on with just a bunch of cuts and movement of numbers? Is that what was presented to the council? A vote, a vote on a piece of paper? That is the new budget? It was a piece of paper, though?
It was an amendment.
It's, I, it seems like it's kind of water over the dam, since it didn't pass anyway.
But where would it...
In the future, for the fourth proposed budget, we will make sure, Mr. Timniak...
It should look like this.
That it is presented...
That's, that's why I'm holding.
It's the budget.
Very thoroughly, that we'll have all of that information.
This is not what was presented to us.
Not at all.
You are right.
Do I still have the floor?
Actually, this is questions for town attorney, but, Mr. Timniak, if you wanted, had a word to say?
Yes. So, I mean, I'm trying to run it through. We sent out, we redid the mayor's budget, and we sent out one sheet, which was a summary with the changes. The other sheet was a mill rate page, and then behind it was each department breakdown of how much we were given. It was a four-sheet page. And then since then, we, we had amendments to that, that budget. So I think we've done that twice in the past, since after the veto, we had to propose a new budget.
In the future, though, would you be so kind as to putting together, if there were to be a fourth mayor's proposed budget, and we are happy to work with you on that, we will, it, it will need to have all of the detail as the original proposed budget.
To redo a complete budget book?
I'm sorry?
To redo an entire budget book? Is that what I'm being asked to do?
It could simply be a printout of the budget book.
Right. But all 100 pages. Okay.
That's how many pages it takes for a budget.
And then I want, I received, the tax assessor from the tax assessor, she told me that Two Roads is paying in full now. So their, their previous abatement has expired.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Point of clarification.
Do I still have the chair?
Point of clarification regarding that question that Mr. Can asked before Mr. Timniak goes, I received information that said, you know, we present it like the mayor did. So then we presented it like the mayor did. And then we were told on June 9th, I received an email that said it had to be itemized. And so we got an itemized amendment, and then we were supposed to vote on that. And then, now we're back at, you can do it by department and not itemization. If the goalpost keeps changing with regards to the rules...
Ms. Manis, this is questions to the town attorney.
My question is, if the goalposts keep changing with regards to the rules, how do, I know the charter, how is that not a violation of the charter to not give an itemized budget, when we were told that is how a budget needs to be presented? So therefore, an illegal budget was presented on Wednesday, July 5th.
Ms. Manis, we are in questions to the town attorney.
Am I wrong?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Can had the floor.
It's not illegal in any way. The budget was itemized.
You yielded to her for the question.
No, she said it was a point of clarification. It turned out not to be.
Okay, so I'm going to continue my questioning, and I'm going to pick up where Ms. Manis started. There's been a budget presented by the mayor. The book was just lifted up. Chris, I think you're all set. Then various amendments were submitted over the last so many 10 weeks or so. Each of those amendments went to the individual accounts and objects. Then the mayor submitted a budget level budget, excuse me, a department level budget. It did not have object level detail. The six of us countered with our own budget that was, budget amendment that was based on department level. We were told in so many words, again, to paraphrase, I think the chairperson even wrote in her op-ed, that no one knew what they were talking about. It's department level.
You don't need to paraphrase. I said that it did not have detail.
Did not have detail. So what we saw last Wednesday was, again, a department level budget that did not have detail. So the confusion, and I have other questions aside from this, is what ground are we walking on? It's like quicksand, where you have to do it this way, but if you follow, Mr. Florick said, follow the mayor's format. We follow the mayor's format, we're shot down. He changes his format. We follow his second format, we're shot down. Now he's back to his second format, and we're told it's actually his third budget. It's not a third budget, it's an amendment to the first budget. I want, truly, is, first, do formats matter at all, or is this sort of a willy-nilly, do what we care when we feel like it? And would the attorney's office say that one budget has been submitted and modified multiple times, or attempted to be amended multiple times? Or do you think that truly multiple individual distinct and separate budgets have been submitted?
I would just say generally, you want to make sure that the departmental expenses are made clear, so everyone knows what they're voting on. That's all. Detailed expenses by department.
Well, so what we voted on...
That I think is what we need.
Okay. So what we voted on last week did not have detailed information about the departments. It was in a format that I would have found acceptable, but we had been told that it was unacceptable. And so to hear it defined as a new and independent third budget is quite disconcerting with the precedence that I'm trying to establish.
Mr. Can, I just want to clarify, so the attorneys also realize, there were line item adjustments on that, with the line items indicated.
So I'd like to add that I have submitted to the town clerk three full budgets, and the budget which we did on Friday, or, I'm sorry, they're all, they're all running together. I am trying to remember when that was originally submitted to the town clerk, going back, so...
June 19th, I think.
I mean, they're all blending together, but I have definitely clocked in three budgets with Sue Pollak.
Are there any other questions to the town attorney?
To change topics, I had more than one question to the town attorney. I tried to reiterate that, but I'll, the next question to the town attorney is, in many cases, we've heard that only the council chair has the, through charter or through procedure, the ability to control the agenda, to establish recesses, to end recesses. Who has the ability to submit questions to the town attorney and expect a complete answer to those questions? Is it only the chair, or is it any member of the council?
Well, it seems like a rhetorical question.
Maybe.
Yes, and I believe you, let's say hypothetically, if you had submitted questions to me, I am endeavoring to give you complete answers. And anyone can ask questions to the town attorney. At a council meeting, it should just be council, whoever.
Very good. There, there is a question that we've bounced around since the March council meeting, and that's regarding the state statute and the funds that were withdrawn from the sewer revolving fund. And given some updated information that was exchanged, say, earlier today and during the course of Ms. Antezzo's public forum, would you endeavor to investigate and provide a response on whether this, we've called it an illegal transaction? Some have said no decision has been made. Can we get a decision in the interest of public interest on whether that decision was allowed by law?
Yes, and I think I was clear in my last report to the council that, I think is a very real question as to the impact of the town's expending considerable revenues to build the sewers before there's a WPCA. So I know very well what the state statutes say. The state statutes are very clear, but I think you have a unique situation in Stratford where the town, before there's a WPCA, expended all that money. So I, I'm not going to give you a report that says that it was an illegal transfer. Prior town councils and the auditors approved it, town finance directors approved it, and as I said in my email to you today, if the council wants to appropriate money to put into the sewer use funds, that's absolutely your prerogative.
Continuing the question, does the mayor's authority allow, you said the council approved it, the mayor approved it, commissions approved it, is any entity in the town of Stratford allowed to circum, not circumvent, maybe circumvent or violate state law?
No.
So if the action taken by the council at the time, and by the mayor, and say the finance director at the time, whoever was involved, if their actions were a violation of state law, we have an opportunity to remedy that violation, or do we simply say, well, they passed it, it's water under the bridge, let's move on?
No, I mean, the question of whether it was illegal or not, I think is a very real issue, that the state statute, I don't think has ever been interpreted in the light of the unique situation we have here, where the town expended its town funds before there's a WPCA. So to say, oh, the town can't make use of those funds anymore, because now they're in a sewer use fund, I think is a big jump. And I haven't seen a case that's decided it.
The sewer revolving fund was established in 1985?
Yeah.
Point of order, I'm concerned that, in fact, it has been publicly stated that the town's being sued, that this line of questioning...
That was in regards to the tax issue that Mitzi mentioned?
No, no, no. No, she mentioned, you know, WPCA.
No, had nothing to do with the suit. It's the tax.
Thank you for the clarification, Mitzi.
On what? I'm sorry, no, I am confused. You told me you were concerned about the... What I said to you was that the mill rate, excuse me, Madam Chairman, the mill rate stated in the Post article was 39.97. Our town charter, 6.2.6, specifically states that the council shall set the mill rate, not the mayor.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
But it has nothing to do with the WPCA that she's talking about.
Right, thank you for that clarification. But my question is still, this line of questioning, if in fact we're, we're going to be taking to court over the mill rate that the mayor has now set because of the lack of a budget, does this in any way prejudice the court or the town in terms of the discussion that's going on right now? I would assume the judge would look at this transcript.
I don't...
I'm not so sure the issues are related, and I don't believe I'm saying anything, I certainly hope I'm not saying anything to prejudice the town. I don't believe I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have one point of order from Mr. Can. The 10 of us also serve as the WPCA board, and I'm just wondering, I mean, there's some line between what's appropriate for a town council meeting versus a WPCA meeting?
Okay.
Okay. But go ahead.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Can has the floor.
Mitzi. In 1985, the town established the sewer revolving fund. It ceded that fund with approximately $320,000 at that time. The position of the town at that time, why would they have put money into a fund that's dedicated to the construction of sewers if not to cede those capital improvements? So obviously, you could take the position, in a sense, an imaginary position, that the town has a lot of unpaid liability that it wants to recover, because it paid for a lot of sewers, and now it's time, because they've been doing sewers for 100 years, maybe the town should take more money from the WPCA, and gee whiz, like, why not just let that happen? And you could take that gee whiz, we just want to take the money, versus the statute, which says emphatically, money that's in the fund, deposited with good faith by the town that it would be used for sewer improvements, was taken for non-sewer purposes. So the, not to, the purpose of the town attorney, I would hope, and the reason why I'm using this counsel, is if there is a question of law or a question of process, that we would avoid lawsuits. We would avoid involving a third party. Because we failed to do that with the WPCA a few years ago, the town expended close to a million dollars in legal fees and lost three lawsuits. And it was embarrassing for the town. It was an idea that could have been vetted out prior to, this is another idea that could have been vetted out prior to, but there was no legal opinion that said, no written legal opinion, that said we could do it. In addition, the mayor's office, using him as the chief executive over all, the director of finance, et cetera, labeled it as a tax relief fund. They kind of washed the money, cleaned the money, laundered the money, if you will, which shows some intent to avoid responsibility under the state statute. Given those circumstances, I would hope the town attorney's office would say, it's in the interest of the town to absolve this in our own family, and not require a third party get involved and create more adverse publicity. That's the end of my questions.
Okay. I mean, those are more statements, and my understanding of the facts is different. I wouldn't describe it in any way as money laundering, or that there was, to speculate what people were thinking about in the 1980s when they put money in. All's I know is that you have a unique situation in town that's not easily fit under the state statute. So in terms of you wanting to remedy it, the council has the authority to remedy it by appropriating money. So as Jay Wahlberg has said, the council could decide, we want to put money in over time, or we want to do it all at once. That's your prerogative in a budget, subject to the mayor's veto. But you're the appropriating authority, so you can remedy it.
So the, you're right. We could vote to return the money as the WPCA, or as the council returned the money to the sewer revolving fund. But that does not prevent this or another council from circumventing state law with some, gee, 40 years ago, we, we paid for something and we want to be reimbursed for it. You know, with no factual evidence, with no physical evidence. And that, it's sort of that reaching and grabbing, going back to the adjectives I used before you gentlemen were here, co-mingling was one word, fraud was another word, plagiarism of the financial sense was another word, conversion of funds, you know, taking ownership over items that are not yours.
Well, I disagree with those. I understand that if the council wants to address this, it's certainly your prerogative to do that.
From a financial perspective, but from an administrative perspective, and what we're allowed to do, for example, just take money without a legal opinion, even though there appears to be very clearly a state law that would say, take pause. I would hope that the town attorney's office would render an opinion, at least to say that that action was not substantiated by facts. It was done for whatever reason, but the, all right, I'm belaboring it. Thank you, Mr. Hodgson.
Thank you.
Ms. Antezzo?
I have a, I just have a comment before my question for Mr. Hodgson. This council did actually vote last year to take $700,000. We didn't know it at the time, because we were told it was the tax relief fund. Questions were asked about last year about the tax relief fund, and we didn't get a sufficient answer. This year, we find out it was really the revolving sewer fund. However, that's just my question, because you said we passed it, yes, but when we passed it, we thought it was tax relief. I have a question totally different. The mayor's article in the paper, or the article about the mayor and the budget and so forth, refers to the mayor using his emergency power. Can you elaborate on that, or where his emergency power may have come from?
If you're referring to a question posed to the town attorney's office as to whether the town can issue tax bills for the fiscal year which began July 1st, 2017?
Is that your question?
I can't hear it.
Yes.
I don't know whether...
Mr. Leclerc, may I help to answer this question, to step up to the podium? Just step up to the podium.
No, no, is this better, Councilman?
Can you hear him? Ms. Antezzo?
Can you hear me?
No, yes.
No.
What was the answer?
I haven't answered it yet.
Oh.
It's...
Can we lower cell phones, please?
I'm not through. Madam Chairman?
If you're, no, there was a phone ringing, Councilman. If your question is regarding whether the town can issue tax bills for the fiscal year which just began July 1st, 2017, in the absence of a tax appropriation ordinance passed by this council, the town attorney's office rendered an opinion that based upon the charter, statutory law in Connecticut, and the common law in the state of Connecticut, that given the current emergency situation in the town and lack of required action by the council, the mayor would be acting appropriately and within his power to order the issuance of tax bills for the fiscal year which began July 1st. And he did so issue such tax bills or order that such be issued by the tax collector.
My main question was the statement that he was using his emergency powers, and nowhere in the town charter could have found any reference to emergency powers.
No, no, no. He's using, it's an emergency situation, the fact that the town did not pass a budget or a tax appropriation back in May. The new fiscal year began without a budget and the town was swiftly running out of money. And within a few weeks, there would be no money to fund any services, yet alone emergency services such as police, fire, and EMS. The mayor inquired as to whether the town, through the tax collector, could issue tax bills to the residents, given that emergency situation and lack of a budget and lack of a tax appropriation. And when you analyze the provisions of your town charter, as well as the state statutes, as well as the common law of the appellate courts in the state of Connecticut, the town attorney's office concluded that, yes, the mayor is fully within his power, and it would be an appropriate action by his part, on his part, to have tax bills issued by the town in order to raise revenues, to keep the town operating.
Point of clarification there.
I haven't finished yet.
Ms. Antezzo?
I'd like your permission to ask Attorney Sonia DeVitt to comment on the emergency powers side of it.
Now, this is questions to the town attorney, that's inappropriate, you cannot, this is questions to the town attorney.
What?
And if you're going to call up, frankly, if you're going to call up another attorney and have her comment, the town attorney's office has nothing further to say because now if you're suggesting there's pending litigation or there may be litigation brought by you as a council member or other members, that would be prejudicial to the town of Stratford. So we would have no further comment.
Yes, this section of the agenda is questions to the town attorney.
Point of clarification.
Permission to call somebody forward, make a comment? I mean, everybody gets called forward by...
They're on staff.
Point of clarification to what Mr. Leclerc was saying, I just have one question.
Ms. Antezzo, is there anything else? Okay. Mr. Farrington Posner?
Do you have a written opinion for the council?
There was a written opinion provided to the mayor of the town.
Do you have a written opinion that the council can see? And we're asking the questions.
We could provide a copy. I don't have one with me, we could provide a copy to the council, yes.
Thank you.
The clerk will provide that tomorrow to the members.
Okay, that wasn't a clarification, that was just a question.
Well, it was a question, I'm sorry, but it was...
It's fine.
Thank you.
Ms. Manis?
Hi. I have two questions. One is, have you been provided with the opinion from Attorney Lord for the WPCA? Has this, has the town attorney staff been provided with that opinion?
I saw at least an excerpt in an email from Mr. Khan that he said was from Mr. Lord.
Okay, so we need to provide you with that excerpt as soon as possible. The other question that I have is regarding Mr. Florrick as he serves as the council representative, and he serves on our behalf. And my question is regarding staff. Is there something that you have? Town attorney.
Ms. Manis?
My question is, Mr. Florrick, as I understand it, is hired to represent the council, and I would like to know how that decision is made. Like, we voted on Ms. Cabral as the town clerk. I'd like to know how our town attorney is assigned and hired and fired. How does that happen?
It's by charter through the mayor, I believe.
Mayor appoints town attorney and through the town attorney, the assistant town attorneys are appointed.
So my question then would be...
So Ms. Manis has the floor. Ms. Manis has the floor.
And this is a question from a constituent, and it's very, where do the town attorneys, so the town attorney's paychecks, their appointments, whether it's for the council or for any other board or commission, I know pension board you sit on with me as well, those are all appointments made by the mayor for us? Because the WPCA board, we were allowed to hire our own outside counsel. So I'm curious as to whether we, and I guess this is a question for the town attorney, whether we as board are allowed to hire our own counsel?
Thank you. No, you are not, by charter. The town attorney represents this board, and it was a very unique circumstance with respect to the WPCA, given that it's a unique entity and that does have certain powers and authorities separate and apart from the town. But there was other support for the WPCA being able to hire its own attorney set forth in our charter that don't apply to this council.
Okay, thank you.
So just a point of clarification, just to be clear, the council attorney is assigned by the mayor, always.
The charter states that the town attorney is appointed by the mayor and that he's the chief legal officer of the town.
And who, but that, you, so you represent the mayor, but who, but we have our own representation as a council, correct?
No, I represent the town.
So you represent us too. How could that not be a conflict of interest if we were to claim ethics or claim a violation with regards to charter?
Well, I don't know, I don't even know what you're talking about with ethics, and it's not a word to use lightly with an attorney who practices law in this state. So I'm sure you're not referring to any of us with ethical issues.
Not you. I'm saying if there was a question of ethics with regard to the budget that was presented and the legality of it, and we wanted to, or the mill rate, as Ms. Antezzo stated, being able to set the mill rate, we really, we really have no recourse, is what you're telling us, that if you just say no, there's nothing we can do because you're in charge. You run the, you run the show, not the elected officials.
Alls we can do is provide the best legal advice that we can and give you legal opinions that will hopefully, hope will help you make decisions.
So to be perfectly clear, this is up to the people right now to raise this issue and to raise this legal issue because the attorneys sitting in the pit are not with us, and you're not with our constituents.
I don't, I really don't know what you're talking about, Ms. Manis. I just said the town attorneys provide the best legal opinions they can, and we believe we act with the town's best interest.
But if we want to pursue something, you're not going to support us.
I, again, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
If we wanted to support a legal action against the mill rate, or if we wanted to support legal action against the illegal levying of a mill rate that we believe the charter is wrong.
There is no mill rate. Just to clarify, are you talking about a mill rate for the current fiscal year that we've started?
Yes.
No mill rate has been set.
That was reported by the mayor in the tax bill.
No, just because you read things in the newspaper doesn't make them true, as you know, or on the internet. No mill rate has been set. Only you as the council by ordinance can set a mill rate. What the mayor can do is order the issuance and authorize the issuance of tax bills through the tax collector until such time as this body passes a budget and sets the mill rate for the town of Stratford. You will set the mill rate for the town of Stratford.
Exactly.
The mill rate has not been set.
Actually, the mill rate, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, that's, I'll let Ms. Antezzo.
Ms. Antezzo?
I believe the mill rate was set last year since he's using last year's budget, and the mill rate last year was 38...
.99.
.99.
There was a mill rate for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2016 to June 30, 2017. You're required by charter to set a, to pass a budget and to set a mill rate by ordinance for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 through June 30, 2018. You have not set a mill rate for this current year.
You are correct.
There is no mill rate for this current year.
The last time we set a mill rate was last year.
No, but the...
There is no mill rate, no mill rate has been set for this current year that you are within right now.
Madam Chair, question for the town's attorney.
Can I?
Madam Chair, question for the town's...
Go ahead, Mr. Farrington.
Mr. Leclerc, if no mill rate has been set by the town council or authorized by the town council, the tax bills that just went out, which I haven't received mine as of yet, so I haven't seen exactly what it says on it, do you know or does Mr. Timniak know what mill rate is on that tax bill and how that mill rate got there if one was not set?
Mr. Timniak can tell you what mill rate is used because the way you raise money by taxes, as you know, you take the grand list of the town and you have to apply a certain mill rate, a certain dollar per mil, per $1,000 in assessed value. That's how you come up with the property taxes that are owed under the municipal law of the state of Connecticut. So a multiplier has to be used, the quote, "mill rate." Mr. Timniak can tell you what that number...
How is that decided, though?
I'm sorry.
If one wasn't set.
Let Mr. Leclerc finish.
You don't have a mill rate that will apply for the year because you don't have a budget. You have a tax bill that has been issued. The only way the mayor can issue a tax bill through his tax collector is by taking the grand list of the town on October 1st, 2016, in this case, and applying a multiplier, a quote/unquote "mill rate." In this case, once this body fulfills its statutory and its charter obligations and sets a mill rate, one would look at the bills that went out and make any adjustment as necessary, up or down, depending on what mill rate you set. Only you could set the mill rate. But in order to issue tax bills, the mayor cannot just authorize the tax collector to bill everyone $1,000 or bill everyone $100. There has to be a multiplier, your quote "mill rate" number. That's not the mill rate, that's the multiplier that is used in this emergency situation to raise money to keep the town operating until you set the mill rate for this current year.
Who sets that amount, though? The multiplier, who sets that amount?
That's based upon your charter and the state law, which looks back at the current budget plus contractual obligations, increases over that. Looks at the last budget, the budget ending June 30, plus increases in that because of contractual obligations. That's the number that we have to use until you folks decide what the budget is.
Okay, but through the chair, contractual obligations, we still haven't seen what they are. We've asked over and over again for them to Mr. Timniak, and we still haven't gotten a breakdown of that. So, so I would like to see that. I'd like to know what the contractual obligations were that are added on top of the 38.99 mill rate and what the residents of Stratford are actually being charged. Why can't I get that information?
I did give...
Is it my fault I was supposed to hand it out to everybody, Chris?
Nope, it was...
Oh, good. Not Carol's fault either this time?
I still don't have it. Nope. We sent out an emergency rate bill, and the emergency rate bill was set at 39.97. It was the number we walked around with Jay Wahlberg, it was the number we discussed at the meeting last Monday morning, and...
I'm sorry, we are in questions to the town attorney. If we're moving ahead to questions to mayor or staff, I'm happy to, but I just want to be clear where we are in the agenda.
Which would be fine with me, I just like...
Would you like to move ahead?
One clarification, please?
No, Mr. Farrington Posner has the floor. He had been asking, are you done with questions to town attorney?
I'm done with my question to the town attorney. My question, well, I kind of feel they all got to go together now at this point. So, yeah, I'm done with my questions to the town attorneys. I'm fine with moving on to questions to the mayor, but if Mr. Khan has something he'd like clarified with the town attorneys, I think we should have that clarified first.
Okay, but you're done with questions to the town attorney?
Yes.
Is there anybody else who has questions for the town attorney? Anybody who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Kadim?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little update on what's going on with the abatement writing or rules or when we're going to set a date to sit with the member, when we're in the, yeah, tax abatement, yes.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm referring to Councilmen...
The chairman would set the date, maybe Ms. Antezzo.
Are you asking the date of the tax abatement committee meeting?
We have not set another date.
I haven't set a date because I'm trying to find out, I'm the chair.
I think dates were circulated, I've got a number of emails.
When all the voting members can appear.
I understand.
I sent out an email, I'm waiting for the answer.
In terms of the legal jogging that we was having a problem bumping up against with the numbers, did you guys get a chance to work on what direction we should go with that or how to clarify it or make it easier for the next time out going forward?
I can't tell you what direction you should go in. I will write whatever direction you want to go in. I think as we left it, there was going to be a meeting with the tax assessor and several other individuals, economic development, and I think some committee members to discuss what type of a program you want. I'll write whatever program you want, but I don't think it's up to me.